So I'm going to call to order the Policy Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020 at 6:35. We are in the Nashville High School North Boardroom. I'd like to do roll call.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Ziem?
Is here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Also here is Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. So tonight we have a couple of policies for review. The first one is E-C-A-R, District Security Procedures. There are some amendments in here. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I worked with Chris Lassard, who is our security officer. And part of the reason we revisited this is because there were some additional things he wanted to add, but also we made sure that we addressed people's concerns in the attached policy 11111 that we want to rescind. So he went through and made some changes. And we made sure that where the first paragraph, we crossed out building input campuses. And also, we actually articulated on page two that about halfway down, "Nashua Police may be called for any individual not complying with school's request to leave campus." Because it's very hard for them to get into the building if they're being difficult to begin with. So we wanted to make sure we addressed the campus piece, which was part of that other policy.
Right. And then we've, I know the concern with 11111 was the fine and who was going to be upholding that. I think we were looking at how we were going to address that in here. Did we?
Well, that's where the Nashua Police come in. Because if we have somebody that's being unruly and needs to be removed from campus, when the police are called, it then becomes a legal matter and is no longer a school matter.
Okay. Perfect. So there's no need for us to be holding anybody accountable within any other space except for our school?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm the one who questioned all this. I have a question, a paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph 5. Upon receipt of personal action form terminating a staff, on the bottom it says, "The principal shall also retrieve ID and keys from the employee at time of separation from the district." And it doesn't have on here, "And forward it to Human Resources Office." Why wouldn't we do that? Wouldn't we want to give it back to Human Resources? Once they separate?
I would, I guess it's not written here, but generally what happens is the principal collects it and it goes back to Chris Lassard. But it doesn't say that.
No, I think it should say where it's going to go after we take it back from, if it's Chris Lassard or if it does, or his position. You don't have to put his name in there. His position. So at least we know, everybody knows, this is where it's going to after.
Okay. So you wanted to say, "The principal shall also retrieve the ID card and keys from the employee at the time of separation from the district and provide them to HR?"
No, Chris Lassard is with, is he security or something?
Yeah, but I'm not sure if he's the, if his title is Director of Security or Assistant. Is it okay if I find out for sure what his title is and put it in so it goes in front of the full board, I have the correct title?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll just put, in quotation marks, Chris Lassard?
So I make a motion that we amend paragraph 5. Is it 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? Paragraph 5 to read as our esteemed chairman spoke. Is that appropriate?
Yes, yep. And I'll make sure that I have the title correct.
Okay, perfect. And, okay, go, we'll vote on the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Any opposed? Okay.
Can I just have another question? That was in the packet. There's no trespassing, so this goes along with this?
Yes, and that was informational. It is displayed on the entrance of every school building in our district.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That was just informational.
This was my one catch for the night, and I think it's appropriate in that same paragraph. It says, "The school office must then make arrangements with the Human Resource Office or High School Principal Office," which was marked out. The "as appropriate" I think goes with the choice of the two, whichever is appropriate. And so since it's not, I think you want to take out the "as appropriate." See how great that was? I'm a real bright.
Fantastic.
I'll tell you, I'm a light bulb.
Okay, can you, oh, "as appropriate," remove.
So I make a motion that we remove the "as appropriate."
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So I motion that we accept?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I would, oh, okay.
I would just make, I wanted everybody to have a moment to review. Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay. So I motion to accept policy E-C-A-R, District Security Procedures, as amended, to go forward to the board for vote.
I second.
All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So in line with that first policy, we now can, we now have the option of rescinding policy 11111, public conduct on school property, because this is now rolled into the District Security Procedures policy that we just amended.
So moved?
Okay. Oh, don't make me cough. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, I will second and say aye.
Oh, sorry. All those opposed? This motion passes. So the next policy is policy K-D-C-A, Student Conveyed Communications. This one we're reviewing?
Actually, I'm sorry, it's EH, if we're going to go by the agenda.
Oh, I have, I'm looking at the one from the other night.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I have to go back to this packet. Sorry, so we're going to be looking at policy EH, Distribution of Public Records. Probably have to get myself organized again. All right. The distribution of public records has been amended and add to. Did everybody get to review this? And does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes?
See, I get dangerous when I'm reading things on the way to the airport, you know?
That's fine. Slur is better than Lex.
I know. Current documents intended for general distribution such as school budget, district budgets will be provided to members of the community in a limited quantity upon request. What is, how are we defining limited? And is this legal because it's a public document?
My answer to that would be, most of our information is posted online. And I think that the reason it says "community" in limited quantity, because it begins to get into, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth paragraph where money is charged for copies? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Guarino?
So you're talking about this first bullet, bullet point, right?
Mm-hmm, right there.
It says, "It's limited quantity to the extent supplies permit at no charge." So it's not really limiting quantity, it's only limiting the quantity for those, for those distributions in which there's no charge. That's my understanding of the way this works.
I just want to make sure of that. Because if we have the budget, you know, and we need more budget copies, that we're going to supply it to our constituents.
Right, but the constituents under the right-to-know law, once, once they start asking for a lot of information that costs, there's administrative costs, and they're going to incur those costs. So I'm wondering why, that leads me to a second question. Shouldn't we mention the right-to-know law that we are distributing, somewhere here that we're distributing public records in conformance with the New Hampshire right-to-know law?
Excuse me, I think, I think that might be in another policy, but I'm happy to go back and research that some more.
I mean, I don't think it would hurt if we, if we just said, "Distribution of public records will conform to state statute, our, our state right-to-know." And that way there, we can, you know, people, because it does.
Is that RSA 91A that's here?
I think that's what RSA 91A is.
I do too, but I'm not positive and I don't want to speak out of turn.
I can Google it.
I just want to say something else as you're Googling, because when it talks about the budgets, when you have a public hearing, you usually give copies of the budgets out. That's a courtesy to people who come, whether it's the city end or the school end. So I want to make sure on that. That was my issue, that we're not charging for the school budget if people are coming to public hearings. So that's, that's where I was coming up with that.
So I think for the elected government officials or representatives of government agencies or departments on this, it states that there would be no charge. So people who, who, like us, who would need the budget can just get it.
Right, but when you have a public hearing, you put copies of the budgets out so people can follow along with that. The city always did it, and so does the school district, at no cost, because it's, it becomes a public hearing. And that's, then that's what you put out there for the hearing.
And I think in those meetings, the packets are a lot smaller. It's not the big, huge one at one time.
Right, it's more like the summary, it's not like the overall thing. They give, like, what the departments are, and, and it's not like the book that we're getting, usually.
I think that would fall under the limited quantities. Yes, Ms. Ziem?
Well, I'm wondering if where it says "resources permit," I think that's ambiguous. We, we all three said "at no cost" here at one point in time now, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be clear to put "at no cost." Because "resources permit" could, that's ambiguous to me. Because somebody could say, some people think we have unlimited resources, actually. I don't know who could possibly think that, but there are people who have that idea. I don't know. So that's a suggestion. How do, how do you feel about that? Am I making much over nothing? Because if I am, I'll stand down.
No, I'm wondering, because we do get, what Ms. Johnson said about, we do have packets available for people coming in, and I would think, when we come into those meetings, like the, I would consider that a limited quantity, because that would be available to the public if they came. Probably no more than 50 pages, I would think, that we're getting at each board meeting. I just wonder if we want to put a number on what the bottom limit is. Because I also don't want to prevent people from being able to afford getting it, but at the same time, the smaller qualities they can.
Well, and I, to support what you're saying, in my time on the board, I don't remember ever anybody being denied. I cannot, I mean, honestly, in 12 years I was on the board, nobody was ever denied. And I think they would, if they had been offended and been denied, they may have spoken up. So I don't think it's actually happened, I just thought, but so will, then I'm okay with just leaving it.
And if I can just speak to, as an example, the middle school building project, those binders are.
Huge.
But each section of the binder is loaded on the district's website, so people can go to the district website and they can look at them and read them. And if they want to run 1,000 pages, they can do that. But a lot of our information, I would say, most of our information is available on the website for people to have access that way. It's when we get into the paper copies that we have to be reasonable about how many copies of what we're making. And the paragraph in particular about the cost per page, in the past, we've had right-to-know requests, and it can run quite high. And if the district was absorbing that cost every time, never mind the time it takes for the administrative assistants to gather that material and make those copies and to do that additional work, but just the paper alone can get quite expensive.
Yes, Ms. Ziem?
And going further with what Mrs. Fitzpatrick is sharing, I think that we, that we may actually want to put, we've had issues where, where demands were made on administration that weren't realistic. You can, I mean, if we're, if we're honest, we have limited resources at best. And to say that, that you want an unreasonable amount of documents in an unreasonable amount of time, when, when, when we are resource-light, and I mean by that personnel-light, we don't have bodies, never mind paper, to, to copy reams and reams and get them out, you know, in 10 days, you expect 500, 500 pages on three different topics, and it became unreasonable. So when you are speaking with this gentleman, I would ask that, that you might consider, I personally think there should be something in there about going to that specific issue. And, and I'm certainly not going to say that we don't have a right, because we do. Right-to-know clearly gives us that right. But I think, all things in reason, all things, I mean, I think when you're asking somebody, when you're demanding something, I think you have to demand something that's, that's feasible, something that you can do in that limited time and still keep all of your other responsibility. I mean, our, our, our district personnel, I think, I personally feel that there, a lot more is expected sometimes than I think is realistic. And I, I, I don't think that's very, there's a balance in everything, and so if there would just be some little mention of the balance, I would think that might be good. So that's just my thought, though.
Oh, everyone's, I know Ms. Johnson had her hand up earlier, sorry.
Mr. Guarino can go first.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that in, in our Committee for Finance and Operations, Mr. Donovan, it's quite public, and people can go back and look at the, at the meeting records and see how much it costs per copy. Black and white, I think, is a nickel. But color copies, I'm trying to remember what the number was, I think it's just under a dollar per copy. And now you're not, you're not talking about personnel time. That's if a volunteer copies it. We have a lot of volunteers that copy resources for our, for our classes, and so, so it doesn't cost us anything with labor. But with something like this, we're talking about, we're talking about clerical costs for, for personnel, too. So it can get quite costly. So I know that New Hampshire's right-to-know law is very specific with copies and how much, and that's why I would recommend that we put, for example, right in the first paragraph, at the end of it, I would, I would say, "In accordance with New Hampshire's right-to-know statute." You know, right at the end of that second sentence, that, that's my recommendation. That way there, so, so people are upfront and know that if they do demand copies, that we, we have a right to charge. And I don't think we, like, here, this first, this first paragraph says that we're not going to charge people, we'll give them as much as resources permit, but I think you can, based on the right-to-know, I think you can charge people right up front. So this is actually being more generous, I think. I'm not, you know, 100% sure, but I think it's a little bit more generous than the right-to-know law, but we should put, in accordance with the right-to-know statute, because we can, we can charge people right off the bat.
And RSA 91A is the right-to-know. I double-checked that.
So is that an amendment?
Yeah, I move.
I second.
Yeah. Just at the end of the sentence, "in according to, according with New Hampshire right-to-know statute, RSA 91-A."
Excuse me.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'm glad Mr. Guarino said a lot of what I said, because I was going to say that when we're talking about documents and the cost, whether it's 10 cents a page or 15 cents a page, but that's separate from what I said about the budget, you know, for when people come to the budget hearing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, some of them don't think about going online because they don't know that it might be online already, because we haven't really done anything, because I know, I think on the 19th, we're having public input. That's where I'm talking about, having the papers. But Mr. Guarino's 100% right. It should reference RSA 91-A, that we're allowed to charge X amount per page for documents that they can get online. So my issue was just about having the, the budget book, you know, whatever we put out with the budget. But thank you, Mr. Guarino, I'm glad I let you speak first, because you said basically what I wanted to say on that.
I'm just looking to see if it, what it says in here, if I can find it quickly, about what they're, what the law is saying is an appropriate cost. It's also saying that you have five business days to request it.
Does it give a time in which it has to be gotten to the people? Must, I think it does, right?
Five.
Five days?
Yes. Yep. The five business days of request to make such record available, to furnish written acknowledgment, proceed that you got it.
And you can also put in compliance with.
So Mrs. Fitzpatrick, can I ask you, if indeed you had, going to the scenario that I was talking about, how would you, you'd have to go back to the right-to-know law and try to get that expanded?
So are we? I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
It's pretty complex. And maybe I wasn't making myself clear when I was talking about what I saw. We had problems in our, in other meetings, and actually, there were board members who were making requests, but they weren't requesting one right-to-know in five days. They were requesting multiple.
Correct.
And they were expecting all within that five days. It's one thing if I give you a request and say, "I have this one right-to-know, you have five days." Then after you get that one, you do another one. But when you come in and you say, "Here are 10 right-to-knows, I want them all in five days," and you're doing it on a staff, that is, in my view, we're very shorthanded, in my view. Having said that, that was the scenario I was, but if I'm reading this correct, you may not be able to do that, because it doesn't make provision for it. So the only way you could get where I thought we might want to go, or consider going, would be to go back to the right-to-know law. Do you see what, am I?
Yes, I do now.
Do you know the answer to that?
I do.
You couldn't, you pretty much couldn't expand that without, I mean, that's the law. I'm certainly not the lawmaker here, so, okay. So then probably that's a dead end.
And it, and it does say, I'm seeing it twice in here, that the cost is, the fee shall be charged for the inspection or delivery without copying of governmental records, whether in paper, electronic, or other form, so that we can, hold on.
We can set the amount, correct? I believe that's what it says.
Yeah, it's a reasonable fee.
Yeah, and 10 cents a page is a reasonable fee, because that doesn't even really account for the time that's put into collecting it and copying it.
Right, yeah. No fee shall be charged for the inspection or delivery without copying.
And do also 10 cents, let's say, for the first 25, and then 15 cents thereafter if you wanted to, like some of the hospitals or places do it. They start off with.
If you don't want them on, on electronic records.
Right, so they'll start low, and the more you want, then it goes up. I don't want to do that to constituents of the city, but I get what Mrs. Ziem was saying about people. And then that would be at the discretion of the district.
Well, and it was not my intent to be critical of, of, of anybody, I'm not personalizing that to anybody. I'm just saying that it seems to me that when you have, going to your original point, when you have clear policies that don't leave room for misunderstanding about what you expect, then you don't get into the ambiguousness, and you're reading it one way, she's reading it one way, and I'm reading it another, and I'm demanding mine's right, and you're both demanding yours right. And so we come to a literal standstill, and it blocks the whole process. So that's all I was trying to get to, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound like in this case it will work. But you can discuss it and see if you agree that it's probably not going to work.
I do think that what Mr. Guarino said about "in accordance with the right-to-know," and we cite that, and then it says to that end, "Public records, government records, as defined in that same statute, are going to be provided," and it says in the following manner. I don't know, I think that where it's saying, "It will be provided a cost of 10 cents per page," one of the things that we do, out of a courtesy, it's not part of the policy, is when we figure out exactly how many pages it is, we let the person know.
Yes.
What the cost is going to be. It's not, yeah, and it's a courtesy. It's not a policy.
Right, because then we, then we run the risk of you printing it all out, and then them coming and picking up and saying, "That's $35," and I'm saying, "Never mind."
Yeah, and it's already printed.
And we've already done it, yeah.
And we've had situations where we have done right-to-knows and printed off quite a bit of information, and they were never picked up. That's happened.
Yeah, that's a waste of everybody's time and energy and costs and, you know.
And that's what I was basically trying to get around, because I remembered when that all happened, and I, and I had to reflect that it, again, everything is within reason. You can't, you know, you can't expect, you can't expect to get more out of some, you can't get blood out of a turnip, I guess is the way they used to say it in, in, in my era, which is long dead, but anyway, thank you.
Can people make these requests over the phone, or in an email, or do they have to come in and request them?
They can make the request over the phone.
I'm just wondering if they want to, if we wanted to make something where they sign an acknowledgement that they're asking for something that's going to, that's going to have a cost associated with it.
Oh, that's a great idea.
And then if they want to click off a box that says that there's some sort of financial hardship, like, let's say it's a parent that wants to know this stuff, not necessarily a newspaper, if there is an option to acknowledge personal financial hardships?
I think the board can do that, if you want to.
Let me just double, I want to check a lot to make sure that it's not.
But I think, going back to what you said, her suggestion is a great one, because it would have avoided that whole, and, and things do happen again.
Yes.
It evolves, it's amazing how history, what they say, you know, all you need, if you don't know history, it's about repeating itself.
Yes, I remember when Mary Tyler Moore wore pedal pushers and.
She threw a hat up in there, right?
And they came back as Capri, so.
So you need.
So it just says, "Every citizen during regular business hours of all public bodies or agencies has the right to inspect government records, including minutes, blah, 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 to copy." Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't look like it specifically states in here if there's a mode that is more preferred. So I think we could say, as the school, as a school district, if we want to be entering into a contract where we're expecting people for pay to think, pay for things, is it's not unreasonable for them to either email and, like, have the form on the website that they can print out, and either fax it, or scan it and email it, or send it in, or drop it off.
How do you want to put that in here?
Well, I'm also thinking, if it's, if it's a parent, if they wanted to, like, print out the form at home and send it in with their kid, and then it gets dropped off at the school secretary, and then it could just be in her office.
So my question would be then, it sounds like we're suggesting developing an EH-R?
Yes.
Which means that we would have to table this in order for me to be able, which is fine, but if you want me to do that, we can. But I don't think that we can do EH without EHR.
Right. I just think it would be easier for you guys to be able to hold people accountable for what they're requesting.
So in order to do that, don't we still first want to vote on the motion that Mr. Guarino made to be changed, as you read?
Yep.
So maybe we should take that vote and then, and then do what you're suggesting. You'll come back with the other.
Yes, and I'm assuming you want me to put an additional line in here that talks about the form that we're creating?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So we want to.
Go ahead. So. So we want to, I want to make a motion to.
No, I think you want to vote on Mr. Guarino's vote. He made a motion and it wasn't voted on, right?
Oh, sorry.
And she had written it down perfectly. She has it written.
Perfectly.
At the end of the second sentence, first paragraph, after resources permit, in accordance with the right to know statute RSA 91-A.
Okay. So I make a motion to amend the first paragraph to end in accordance with the right to know act, which is RSA 91-A.
We already had that.
So we just need to second it?
We need to vote on it. It was seconded. He made the motion. I seconded.
And I just reread it.
Okay.
It's easy to do that.
We talked a long time after that, didn't we?
It's a lot of hot air.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay. And so we want to add in, we want to do, add an R. And then do we want to add in a paragraph about how they can get the form to us? Do we want to put that in here? Or do we want to just put that on the form?
My suggestion would be that there is an additional paragraph under the paragraph where it says above will be provided a cost of 10 cents per page and then craft some language just about, and EH-R is the form that people would use to acknowledge request. And I'll have to think of a good word, but basically that they understand that when they make the request, there's going to be a cost attached.
So do we need a motion for that, to do that?
To put that in?
Yeah.
I haven't written it yet.
Yeah. I think we'll have to table, I think we'll have to table this for now and come back when that paragraph's added in.
And we're going to put down the cost of how much it is per page, right?
Well, we have.
So this way they know.
We have 10 cents in here already. That's in the.
Okay.
Uh huh. Yes, Mr. Guarino.
I was just wondering if we could have Mr. Donovan's eyes at that bullet point where it says 10 cents per page because he's been keeping track of, of the cost for photo copying, and he might have some, he might say, oh, yeah, 10 cents is fine, or he might say, you know, wait a minute, we could do more, or he could say, we'll do 10 cents a page or if, or maybe have an opening because some of these color copiers are really expensive.
Right.
So I would just like to, if you could.
Sure.
Run it by his.
I love talking to Dan.
Yeah. Run it by him and see, see what he has to say.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So yes, I think we can, 10 cents per page, black and white, and then whatever it costs at color.
Yeah.
And then people can decide if they really need to know that bushes are green.
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to remember because I'm sure when I was on the board, and you may have been here, there was an issue where there was a document that had a lot of color in it, and it was unfortunate. I couldn't even believe. I was astounded at the money they were talking about. And again, going, hardest part of this job is the budget. I hate it because, because all of these people come in with legitimate needs. And how do you say, well, I'll give you your need, but your need, we can't do it? That's, to me, they put you, it's a terrible position to be in, but it, money always does that, doesn't it? So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I motion to table policy EH for further review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Now we are on to.
Now, could I say something about a couple more paragraphs?
Yes. The one that we just looked at?
No, I'm further down on the page.
So I think we're going to table this whole thing and come back to it again.
Oh, we're going to table the whole thing and come back?
But if you have something that you want to tell me, because we already tabled it, but you can check in with me and I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'll, I'll get in touch with you about some of the other stuff. Okay.
All right. So the next policy that we're looking at is policy KDA, public information. And this is a very amended policy.
And I will let you know that Stacy, our director of communications, completely reviewed this. So she was the person that looked at it, and we took a lot of the information from sources that follow the New Hampshire School Board Association format. So this was developed based on what some other school districts had and what Stacy said is specific to Nashua. And she, for lack of a better word, she vetted this.
Uh huh. Yes, Ms. Zim.
At one time, we had a document that I, it might have, I'm not sure if it was Dr. Mosley or Connie, forgetting her last name. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I never met her, but I've heard her name a lot.
Yes. But at that time, it was, it was an informational sheet. It was on the website. It was, you know, this is how many students we have, this is how many ELLs, this is how many special education, this is how many homeless, this is, I mean, it was wonderful, the information. And I think often of how it could even be expanded because we are, as you said earlier, we are very diverse. And I don't think the public, if.
And I, one of the things I will tell you, it's funny, I was talking to Stacy today because I was double checking everything with her. And we do have a basic fact sheet on the website.
That was it.
But she and I, as we were talking about it, felt that it could be more robust because it didn't contain as much information as, so I do think that over time, we're going to continue to work on those fact sheets so that people in the community can look at them, but also people considering moving to Nashua will have a snapshot. What's on that fact sheet are things like our graduation rate from both high schools, what the average class size is in the elementary schools in each grade level. I'm trying to remember what.
When that goes out before you actually finalize it, could the board have a, there, one of the things that I've, that I think is so interesting, I would like to have it broken down, per student in special education, how much does every, if I average, you know, you average it out. How many does special education? How much does the ELL student cost us? How much? Because I don't think the public has any comprehension of, to me, that tells you very quickly where the bulk of our money goes.
I understand your concern. I'm not sure we can do that. I don't think it's legal.
Well, it's hard because it's convoluted. Is that what you're saying?
Getting down to those specifics, I don't think we're really allowed to do.
Not allowed to do. That's it. Now, where would that come from, that not allowed?
State.
The state?
The Department of Education.
That's interesting.
The cost per student, you can do an overall cost per student, or you can put how much the school district average contributes to each student. So for example, there's a basic formula where, let's say, some districts may have an average that they spend 12,000 per student. Other districts may have an average of 7,000. Others may have 17,000. So that's something that people, that we can produce. And it's just an average cost of our contribution to each student's education. And in many states, there is a bottom line that you have to reach. So if the state says the minimum amount that you can spend on student education is 8,000 per student, you can't spend 6,000 per student. You have to meet the state minimum of what's a reasonable amount.
But so are you saying that New Hampshire has that or just some states have it?
Some states have it.
So we don't have it, do we? If we have, I'm not aware.
Not that I know of, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Uh uh.
I'm still learning New Hampshire law.
And it's, and it changes. It evolves.
Yes.
As soon as you, I mean, like in the short time that I've been off of the board, I can't tell you how overwhelmed I am by some of significant changes, very significant change in just two years. So it evolves. And the fact sheet is the same way. If you don't keep changing it, it becomes obsolete. It becomes more damaged than good because you're giving false information.
Correct.
So, so that's, but because I thought like at the budget meeting, the, some of the immigration things were very, very interesting. And I don't think, those are things I don't think the public hears too much about, and so they're not aware. And I, I think, I think the more the public engages, the more they know, the more they're going to support our district, the more they're going to realize our needs. And in realizing our needs, I think if they, if they, if they realized the need was so great, they wouldn't be as reticent about spending some of the money. I understand that money, I mean, there are people who can't afford their taxes. So we always have to try to balance those poor, you have to try to balance the reason, the balance of life is always what's difficult. Sorry for all the hot air. I'll shut up.
No, that's okay.
That was interesting, though. I appreciate your information.
Welcome.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I told you, I'm a woman of questions here. In the first paragraph, the board will do its best to keep citizens of Nashua informed of the affairs of the district. Good public information, we crossed out the word program. It's factual. We crossed out comprehensive and put current and accurate versus continuous. To achieve its goals for good school community relationships and maintenance of two-way channels of communication with the public, the board authorizes the superintendent to. I'm a little concerned with authorizing anybody that might take away the board's power. And I don't like to say power, but I don't care who the superintendent is. The superintendent works for the Board of Education, and we have to have some oversight. Leaflets, news, special pamphlets, I don't know. And then the last one in the third indent, assist with coordinating communications with fellow city of Nashua divisions that support the district students and schools. Or which divisions are this?
So, sorry. I'm sorry. When it's appropriate, you work with different divisions. So for example, a joint letter was put out by the school district and the Department of Public Health about our current situation. And so that was done in conjunction together. So the reason I think it's, it seems ambiguous is because depending on the situation, it would be a different division in the city that we would be working with.
So what letter went out with the?
About the coronavirus.
Did we get a copy of this?
I think it was emailed.
I'm pretty sure it was emailed to the board.
Okay.
But it was a joint letter between the city and the school district. And if there was a situation where we needed to put out a joint statement with law enforcement, that would be a different division. So I think that it's, just says division because every situation's a little different in terms of what different city division we'd be putting joint statements out with.
So it says, I'll just read it here. Good, they, we got emailed it as parents, but it also came into, I think, the Board of Ed.
When did it come into the Board of Ed?
Friday. I have it Friday, to my personal account.
And who did it come in from?
It came in from a message from Nashua School District.
Okay.
Signed by, signed by Dr. Mosley, but it also states that the City of Nashua Public Health and Community Services is asking all students who have traveled, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
So Director of Public Health and Community Services. So it's, it's the coordination of, I think, the responding divisions within Nashua for, I'm assuming if there's something where the police department needs to be involved or even speaking with Public Works. I was specifically thinking about this in regards to snow days.
Right.
And who he needs to speak with in order to make that decision. I don't want to make that decision at four in the morning.
And then it comes, and then my next paragraph, I got a couple. I'm going to just throw them out.
That's fine, just him.
And then it says, because I'm not too keen about saying that we're authorizing the superintendent to do everything. You can't take the board's authority away.
What do you think he would be making decisions about that he would, that would normally have to come through us?
Just in general, just in general. And then the next one would be, the board expects the school events will include but not limited to the school performance and students' progress, learning strategies, and academic opportunities. How about academic achievements also? Achievements is very important. And then at the bottom, it's, we took out the whole thing that says the public information program for the district should meet with the following purposes. And then the second one down, an exchange between parents and teachers in the interest of students. And then communications of attitude of opinions and expectations with respect to the school district and its operations. We took that out also. So, you know, I think what we're doing, instead of maintaining a higher level sometimes with students' opportunities, but why aren't we talking about achievements anymore? But students achieving things versus more the opportunities. I think achievement is also, and we know, an exchange between parents and teachers in the interest of the students. We took that out. So those are just my little pet peeves here. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. I, I understand, I understand the, the concern to authorize the superintendent to do things, but I, I think that the, these are well-intended. The authorization here for the superintendent and the district is well-intended. And one of the things that I'm thinking of under these bullet points is that really nice informational material that, that the CTE, the gave us on the opportunities for the CTE program. I think that's what it's talking about. The board isn't, we're not going to go and create that ourselves. We need to authorize the superintendent and the administration to produce those kind of materials. As far as achievements go, I, I do agree that we need to, the board needs to be informed about achievements, but I think those are, those are going to be covered under the curriculum committee where, where the, where the board is reporting. And it's all public, actually, because it's public information, where the superintendent, the assistant superintendent are reporting to the board and the board committee on the, on the different, on the achievements. So I think we get that, but it's under a different sort of venue where, where, where they talk about proficiency. So, so we get that, we get those twice a year. So I think it's kind of like a different, under a different place where, where that, where that happens. So I do agree that, you know, we have to be careful how we authorize the superintendent because, you know, the, the board has the authority. But I think, I think it's appropriate here, based on the information that I've seen produced from the district.
I would also add in that school performances, when you talk about the student achievement is, I don't think that it would, in the same way that we wouldn't highlight a, a student with, with a, breaking their confidentiality and privacy and talking about something negative, I think we also have to hold that same standard for kiddos who even got an A plus on a fantastic test. But I think when they're entering into a school performance, or let's say they're going into the state for an academic competition or some sort of, you know, like in what would be sports, but for, you know, in the academic world, I think we can speak about that and he can share that with the district because these are kiddos who are agreeing to perform and, you know, get rid of their privacy. Do you understand?
For example, for example, every year when we have national merit scholars, they're acknowledged at a board meeting individually. Last year, we had quite a few. We don't always have that many, but those kinds of academic achievements are acknowledged publicly.
And do we still do honor roll in the papers? I think my mom has a couple from.
I, I think it's in the paper.
From my brother. It wasn't for me.
The schools do acknowledge it. I assume it's in the paper. I don't always read the paper.
Right. Because it used to be, like, it used to be submitted to the telegraph and, you know, the, the students in each school that got the As and then who got the As and the Bs. So high honors and then honors. So that's a way of acknowledging. And it would be, it would be Dr. Mosley to hand that letter over to them. So I think he, I think that would be what you want.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Zim.
The difficulty, I appreciate what you're saying. The difficulty, I think, of what you're saying comes in that the board, we do not have the ability to produce, for instance, this fact sheet. There's no way I could, I was, I was involved with that intimately because that was Dr. Brown and I that did that. You reminded me, and I appreciate that. And by myself, I could not have done it because I don't have the resources. I don't have the typist. And these are all like the newsletter. That's a professional paper to some extent, and certainly not something that, that I'm, that I, that we could do. So physically, I don't think we can do it. You could put something in, you know, that, that you would like to see these things, but I think. but I think there are too many. I mean, if it were one document, but you're talking about multiple documents. And if the Board has to review all of these documents, the time, the delay that it would cause, I think it would become, I think it would become very difficult to do. And maybe you have a suggestion how to get around that, but in my mind, that's the issue that I see, where you pretty much can't do it any different.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
And I just want to say that ultimately, the Board does have authority over any superintendent. So I'm not talking about any specific one. But if the superintendent, who was in that position, acted in a way that the Board did not agree with or appreciate, the Board still has authority over the superintendent. That's part of the reason for the policy. You're giving permission to the superintendent, but if they act in a way that the Board does not support, there's recourse for the Board. No matter who the superintendent is.
Right. They, it was interesting. They used to say to me all of the time that the Board only has one employee.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Mosley.
It's true.
And everybody else works for Dr. Mosley. And it makes it, it is a different, it's a difficult balance. But there has to be, balance is, balance in everything, I think, is the real key to success. If you can, if you can do all this and hold your head up high, you can be called man. So, but do you have...
Or a woman.
Yes, excuse me. That was, of all people, I shouldn't be making that slight.
Mrs. Johnson, do you have some way that you can conceive of that we could get around those issues?
I will give it up. You know? I'm just bringing it to the front.
Yeah.
To the forefront, basically, that I get it, it's a lot of work that we cannot do. But I just want to make sure that we don't relinquish our responsibility as a Board and let it just be, no matter who it is, that, that we're going to let them have carte blanche, basically, with this whole thing. I do, you know, feel that some of these things, some of the changes, I'm not crazy about. You know, and I mentioned exactly what I am not crazy about. I think academic achievements matter in a performance or whatever.
Can amend that. We can amend that.
It's still, yeah. It's still an achievement. And I think we don't show kids, you know, when they do things right, more or less, anymore, that, that they can achieve, whether it's in a performance, or it's in math, or whatever they're doing, we have to acknowledge that achievement, not just the opportunities, but that achievement that they've made it. You know, it's like the commercial, when you see that autistic boy, and he gets up there and he recites everything, and he goes, "Yes, at the end, yes." He achieved something that probably never thought that anybody thought he ever could do with autism. So, you know, I want to make sure our students always known that they can do what, what they, even though if they think they can't do it, they can conquer.
So what if we said all, all of the school performances, student progress, learning strategies, academic opportunities, and individual student achievement with, would we need to add in, like parental permission?
"Board expects that school events will include, but not limited to, school performance, students' progress, student strategies, academic opportunities." And you had said it, and I had the words for it.
So that's, "The Board expects the school events will include." So I don't think it can go there because we're not celebrating achievements under school events. So it would be...
Yes, Mr. Garino?
I have a suggestion. We could just say, instead of saying at the end of that sentence, "and academic opportunities," just say, comma, "academic opportunities and achievements." You don't have to say personal achievements. You can just say, "and achievements," like that, that ceremony that they have for merit. And then, and then in parentheses, "Students ident, identity, personal identity will be respected," or "personal identities will, will be..." Something like a caveat saying that we, we will protect the, the personal identity of students, just in parentheses. I mean, you could, you could celebrate achievements and then say, you know, "students..."
All students, all students' information is kept as confidential.
Personal information, right, that's the word I'm looking for. Thank you.
Confidential. Academic opportunities and achievements.
Right.
Period. All students' personal information will remain confidential. Done.
Yeah, something, something.
Thank you, Mr. Garino.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just tripping over, "The Board expects that school events." I just don't think academic achievement is a school event.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Right, "We expect, will include." Okay, so this is like we're kind of saying that they have to do it. Is that...
Right, so he needs to let people know that they're banned in chorus concerts, that the academic testing is happening.
I see.
That we're changing curriculum.
Yeah.
That there's an opportunity for a science government thing.
So this might not be the appropriate place to...
I think it might need its own...
To advertise that, yeah.
...tab.
Yep. I, I...
But that could also be something that if Miss, if Dr. Mosley wants to, I guess, bring to us and say, "There's been a student who did, you know, this group of students, and I'd really like to highlight them in the next newsletter," maybe that's something he can bring to us and we can say, "That's a great thing to, to add to the list." And that's kind of where we can hold on to some of that authority that is not so carte blanche given up.
So what have we decided to do? We're still talking.
We're still kind of bawling it over.
Yes, Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
I just want to, I feel like saying that we're going to acknowledge students for schools' performances and academic oppor, if we're going to acknowledge students for their achievement, we can't keep their information confidential. That's a contradiction.
And it could also be one of those things where one student's achievement is not the same as another student's. And, you know, one kid finally getting a C on that science paper that he's been trying so hard on would be that child's academic achievement that probably weighs in, in their heart just as much as the kiddo that got the A. It just comes from a different, it's a different endpoint on the same path. But I think, I think if he wants to come up with something that does celebrate, he's, he's going to have the guidance counselors, he's got the principals, it goes up the ladder. We'd like to do something either within our school or district-wide. I think that's something that he can bring to us if he wants to. Or they can bring to us. It doesn't necessarily have to be him.
Yes, Ms. Seem?
Oh, I, no.
Oh. He was suggesting a margin.
Well, yes. I was thinking, I was thinking twice about saying anything else.
Okay.
So...
So do we want to, are we comfortable with it, how it's written here?
Why don't we just add "and achievements," period? Would that satisfy you, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I just don't think an achievement is a school event.
Oh, okay.
Is why I said that. I don't think that that's the best right there.
We're talking about academic achievement. But yes, you're right.
Right. But it's not something like the whole city needs to show up for...
No, the whole city doesn't show up for anything.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Very seldom.
Not even for the budget.
The only time I've ever seen a, a big show...
Football game.
Was...
Yes.
For the football games.
At Stellows.
Yeah.
Well, and when, and when we were cutting the, the budget for the, for the athletics, the place was mobbed. Only time in 12 years.
Priorities.
Then I'll take back everything I said and just leave it the way it is.
Are you...
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
So I motion to accept policy KDA in regards to public information.
A second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, motion passes to go to the Board. Okay. So the next one is policy KDCA, Student Conveyed Communications. And this was one that was mainly rewritten just to match the format of the rest of the policies, but also struck out the last sentence. Do we have any concerns or comments about this?
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'm trying to find, I'm looking through all this, and I don't know if we went by it. Oh, no, I think it was the paper that, that you put on hold. Yeah. Let's see. Give me one moment to read it over again.
Okay.
With all my comments.
Excuse me.
Now, on the first bullet, again, communications within individuals or organizations, and then on the third bullet, define the, you know, the organizations. Do we know which organizations, basically, we would be working with, or they would?
Yes, Mr. Garino?
I know that there's a lot of organizations, like Scholastic Books and things like that, where, where it's, they really have, the books are really inexpensive, and, and, and so kids can get a lot of reading in. So I, I don't, I, I think the organizations are mostly academic, or almost exclusively academic, I would imagine.
Or to the benefit of the school. So, you know, you know, during the winter, when Burlington Co. Factory does there, you donate a jacket, you get the $10, and it goes to, I think, didn't it go to Katie's? Some of them went to Katie's closet, yes. So I think it's either academic, or it positively benefits the school, or the students within the school.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of get an idea, because we've got organizations here all over the place, and we haven't defined any, basically. So I don't know what organizations are trying to work with the school, et cetera. And I think some of us on the Board who just got on the Board should kind of get a better idea of what organization is the district working with. So if parents ask us, you know, if they want to donate, or they want some information, we have, we can tell them.
A lot of the community-based events that we do are under the auspices of the United Way. So a lot of what we do is through their umbrella, so to speak. So that would be one of the organizations that we work with. So, for example, within the United Way is the Prevention Coalition, and I'm a member of that. And we do the student video contest every year. So that information goes out to the principals, to distribute to the teachers, for the kids to become involved in this video competition. And it's through the Prevention Coalition, but it's under the United Way. That's one example.
Same with Red Ribbon. It's under the...
Yeah, Red Ribbon, yes. So that's, a majority of the communication goes through that type of organization.
Right, and I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking of things that I've emptied out of the kids' folders, you know, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girls Inc.,
Yes.
Boys and Girls Club. The Hanaford does the Rising Stars program. Some of the pizza places in town, I think, will do fundraisers. So I, I don't think it's any agency trying to peddle some point that not every parent would be in agreement with.
Oh, I don't mean that. It's just that when we're reading this, and it's saying organizations, I don't have kids in school anymore. So I don't get these newsletters coming home anymore, so I can't see that. So when we, when we're kind of like at that disadvantage, I just like to know what organizations we're working with.
Yeah.
So if anybody says to me, "Oh, I want to donate to this," who do you suggest? Who does, who's working with the school district? I can't answer because I don't know.
So, for example, Meals Matter, which we got a lot of parent donations, is under the United Way.
Yep.
So...
Is that the weekend where they feed the kids over the weekend?
That's 60 Days of Hunger, which is a different thing. But no, Meals Matter is a program that was actually started by some high school students last year at Nashua South. And now Nashua South and Nashua North have sort of an endowment where they make sure that every student is able to eat, because not every student falls under free or reduced, and not every student has money for lunch every day. So we have a program called Meals Matter that was started by students that then was absorbed by the United Way to give them the legal pieces that they needed in place to be a nonprofit.
Right. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a bit challenging to donate directly to the school, because the school isn't a 503(c), but you can donate to the PTA or the PTO, who can then acknowledge the receipt and keep track of it.
Anytime there's a donation to the school district directly by any group or individual, anything over $5,000 has to be accepted by the Board.
I'll accept that. I'm just kidding.
You actually get quite a few.
Yes.
We're very lucky.
Cool.
Yeah, it is cool. When you have needs like we have, it's very cool.
We actually have quite a lot of philanthropic folks in Nashua.
Yes.
I look forward to meeting them.
And we want to thank each and every one of you. Come quickly.
Yeah. The doors are open. Seats are empty. So I motion to approve policy KDCA, Student Conveyed Communications.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes to go to the Board. The next policy, we have this one and then one more, and we can wrap up. The next policy is policy EHAC, District Mail Service. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak to this?
The reason we brought this forward was because the last time it was reviewed was 1982. And we have a Board policy that says we're going to review all our policies every four years, so I'm trying to catch up on the oldest. One of the things that we did do, on December 18th, the Board voted to let us change letters to, numbers to letters. So we don't need a vote on that in particular, but this was Pop's policy 6610, and it is now EHAC. But we already had the vote to allow us to move from numbers to letters. So really, nothing on this has changed because it still applies. It just hadn't been reviewed since 1982, which is when I graduated from my undergraduate. So it was a couple of years ago.
So we're just doing two birds and one stone here?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this? Okay. So I motion to approve the change from the numbered policy to policy EHAC, District Mail Service.
Second?
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the last one, we are on our roll, guys, is policy FC, Managing Asbestos in School Facilities.
And this was reviewed by Chris Lissard with Sean Smith. Sean was out sick, so Chris, but he, as you can see, there was quite a bit of wordiness, and it, we made it more succinct. There was two reasons to review this. Number one, this was last approved in '91. And number two, as you know, we're in the middle of a middle school building project. And so we felt like this was a perfect time to review this. But just to be clear, the paragraph that is in there is more or less just stating the law around asbestos.
Right.
Do we need to expand it to state as resources allow?
We don't have a choice.
But we...
No, if there is a problem with asbestos, we don't have a choice.
Right.
But I, but we've had, we've had, we've had asbestos that didn't get done immediately.
If, if there's a situation where there's suspected asbestos, but nothing is moved, so, for example, if we think that under the floor, there may be a layer, as long as that floor is not touched, we don't have to deal with the asbestos.
I, I sell real estate, so I...
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm not being smart. I'm, I'm aware of that. I'm, I'm just...
I didn't say that.
No, no. I wasn't trying to be disrespectful. Actually, I, I appreciate. I think you do a great job, truthfully. You're very, very, very helpful, very informative, and some of us need a lot of information, so, speaking for myself. But I just wondered, in the case, so in this report, I guess I would, I, it raises my curiosity. So are you saying there is no flaking asbestos anywhere that we know of, other than what's being dealt with immediately at Elm Street?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Garino?
I'm a little, it says that the, it's in past tense, it says, "The school..." It says, "The school district contracted with a firm to inspect each building." Okay, which is, okay, that means that we, we've done it. But I guess I have two points. One, since the, the law requires that we inspect, that we do re-inspections every three years, shouldn't we say that the district will conform with the law? And then, that, because we, we did say we, we inspected, but that's in past tense.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the other thing is, we usually cite the, cite the statute at the bottom of the, of the policy. I was wondering if we could do that also. I, I just was wondering if we could put something in there that says, "The district will, will adhere to the requirement based on the statute and will inspect every three years," or "will conduct inspections based on, on the, on the statute requirement every three years."
I think that the last sentence addresses what you're asking. Copies of the asbestos management plan and reinspection reports for the school district are on file in the Plan Operations Office and at each school office.
Yeah.
Doesn't that address? No, it doesn't?
It doesn't actually say that, that we will do. It, it says we're going to have reports, but I, I would just be more, I'd be more comfortable if we actually said that, that the district will conform with this, with the required statute and, and will re-inspect every three years. And then, just before that last, you know, copies of the management plan and reinspection reports will be available. And then, and then have the, cite, cite the law at the bottom.
So, it looks like the law and why it says AHERA, and I may not be correct, but I'm on the, I'm on the EPA website. It looks like the Asbestos Hazardous Emergency Response Act incorporates a couple of different laws, and one of them being air quality, drinking water, liability acts, restrictions on discontinued uses, materials in schools, worker protection. So, I, I think the era encompasses, because it looks like there are about 10 or 12 different that I'm just seeing perusing the interwebs.
Right. But, but what I'm concerned is that it doesn't actually say we're going to do the, the inspections every three years. It doesn't, it's, it says that it's required from the EPA and required from AH, AHERA that re-inspections be conducted. And it says, "We're going to have our reinspection reports available," but it doesn't actually say we will conform to the AHERA by re-inspecting every three years.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I, I would hope that we could, you know, we would actually state that, that that's what we're doing.
Right. Ms. Fitzpatrick, maybe you can answer this, now that I'm reading this a bit more. It looks like because this is a law, the Asbestos School Hazard Abatement Reauthorization Act, which is a little bit different than the, the one that we're looking at here, provides funding for asbestos abatement, loans and grant programs to schools, which I don't, I'm sure they've, they've seen this, but I just like seeing loans and grants in schools.
And I, yes, but I think that initially, the grant money that was available when this issue first arose was probably much more abundant.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, and that's like $3.
Well, I don't know, but I, I do know that we do comply, and I understand what Mr. Grino is saying.
Yeah.
That you would like it explicitly stated, "The district will conform with AHERA and inspect every three years."
Yeah, I mean.
And did you want that right before the sentence that starts, "copies of the asbestos management plan"?
Yeah, I think that's where it should be.
Okay. I mean, then it's explicitly stated.
Yeah. I mean, I have, I, I think it's, it's okay the way it is, except that it just needs to say that we're going to do that.
And you want the statute cited.
And I, and I would cite the statute, right. I, I moved to make those.
A second.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
And I want to add something else to it, but if you want to just vote on that motion.
Okay.
And then I can do my additions.
Okay. So, all those in favor of Mr. Grino's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
And I think you should have also in there, the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENVC 400, Asbestos Management and Control, because that is an administrative rule. When I took my test to be a real estate agent, I had to know about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, those all should be cited in here.
Okay, can you give me that again? ENV?
Yes, right in the first paragraph, the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules.
Oh, I see it. Okay, yeah.
And it should be where the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act of 1986, because that's the correct way, if the federal government has it also.
Okay.
And that's just it, my changes.
So, I make a motion that we amend the policy as Ms. Johnson stated.
A second? Oh, he.
I make a motion, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we amend the policy as Ms. Johnson suggested. Sorry.
So, specifically, I just want to make sure it's written down correctly.
I think Ms. Fitzpatrick got it right.
Yes, that you want to take from the first paragraph.
Okay.
Asbestos Hazard Emergency Respond, yes, I'm sorry, Response Act of 1986 and New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENVC 400, Asbestos Management and Control. And those should be part of the citations.
Yes.
Okay.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any other comments or questions about this? Okay, then I motion to.
Adjourn?
Well, I motion to, to pass.
Oh.
Policy FC as amended.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I now motion, oh, Ms., did you have anything else?
Are you sure?
So, Mr. Grino, do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Seem?
Motion to adjourn?
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Second.
I second that motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.